Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Vice President Vinny Palermo, District Four.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, but limited to the justice for all.
Well, everyone, thanks for being here. It's beautiful outside, so that means you must want to be with us more. So that's really good. You know, last week, we had the State of the City with the mayor right here in this room. And it was, the message was really good, if you really, really listened to it. It really hit home. I left out of this room and walked in and talked to my chief of staff.
Can you speak a little louder, please? I'm sorry.
Oh, come on down.
Like a game show?
Yeah, you're next. But walked over to my office and talked to my chief of staff. And I said, wow, that was one heck of a year. You know, we did a lot for the city. We've been through a lot for the city, and it's a reminder of how much more we have to do for the city. And that's why we're here. That's what we do up here. So without being said, what we're working on now, because we're finally out of that Arctic blast and the snow is finally melting, give a break for those workers out on the road. They're the ones who are going to help get your streets back into shape. So don't honk at them. If you see a crew of two or three trucks in a row, they're out doing the work for the people that we need to do. So with that, happy Tuesday, and let's get to work.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six through eight can be considered together for West Village Point Replat 10, located southeast of 175th and Burke Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Village Point to allow for the realignment of 175th Street for the construction of a new medical building. Items seven and eight are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat for West Village Point Replat 10 with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks.
The public hearings on items six through nine begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. President, members of the council, city staff. I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Thank you for your time, and it's nice to be first. Can you hear me? Okay. So we're here today to seek approval of both the preliminary and final plat for the Village Point Medical Project. So I'm going to skip ahead and, well, I don't know. I'm going to skip ahead and show you the overall site plan. This is the end of the day when all of the development is complete. And both the preliminary and final plats anticipate this. We're starting off developing what you see labeled here as the East Building. And it will have a companion surface parking lot to the north. But in the future, when the second building is developed, which will be the fourth major building on the campus, then an east parking garage will be built on what will initially be the surface parking lot. And a connector parking garage will be built to the north of the connector building. So that when we're done in several years, four operating, fully operational medical office buildings, and plenty of parking throughout. We've had at least two dozen meetings and Zoom calls with representatives of the two neighborhood associations to the south. Lot of good dialogue between ourselves and all of them, I believe. We did make some commitments, including moving the East Building a little bit further to the north to alleviate some concerns about proximity to the property line. And now that building is about 135 feet from the property line. There are a number of things we will do to the overall site when the connector building is built that I think are important to kind of quickly go over. The first thing that would happen is the roadway, oops, 175th Street that's in place today, that roadway would go out of service, and a new roadway will be built on the west side of the campus, connecting into the neighborhoods to the south. At that time, we'll put an eight-foot walking trail in on what is really the south side of the sidewalk. Doesn't make a lot of sense to have one on both sides because of the buildings and delivery areas and things like that that occur next to the buildings. So a new eight-foot sidewalk will be put in. There'll be a fence put in, a metal fence, and some pretty extensive landscaping. And we'll work with the neighborhood and the specific homeowners along the property line to identify species of trees that we all feel good about initially and that we feel like will have a good lifespan. And we'll work out a maintenance plan for those. Couple other things that we've agreed to do is take a look at some of the existing mechanical equipment on the campus today, particularly the West Building, which is the 110 Building. There have been some concerns that it's a little bit noisy. We didn't build these buildings. We acquired the two buildings that are in place. So we'll go back and see if there's some screening that we can do, which I think can be somewhat helpful. The other thing is there's some operational things that occur out there based on the surgical requirements that both Nebraska Medicine and Children's Hospital have. There's deliveries that come really early in the morning, and it's probably disruptive. Fortunately, I haven't heard them because I haven't been in there for surgery. But we will work with and are working with Nebraska Medicine to see if those deliveries can be handled a little bit differently. But there are surgical packs that are delivered each day for the procedures that happen that day. So they can't be delivered the day before, and we'll just, we'll work through that. Other than that, I think it's very straightforward, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted also, I guess, to thank the developer and the neighbors for working together on this project. It's kind of been a long time coming. We've been actually to this point before and gone back to the drawing board. But I know that Mr. Noddle and Mr. Zetsman and the Noddle team have worked with Chuck Stevens and Gary Randall and Mr. Carlson and all the neighbors with all the Zoom meetings and some of the in-person meetings that were held as well. So I think it shows a lot of collaboration and conversation and listening to. And I appreciate the efforts to get to the point we are today for the preliminary and final plat approval. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding.
And it's motion to, for approval.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan.
Festerson.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through eight are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you all, and stay safe.
Item nine, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Reddick Tower redevelopment plan, generally located at 1504 Harney Street.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Jay Klein, 10404 Essex Court, Suite 101, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. I represent White Lotus, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. As much as I like the building, I'd kind of like to know the difference between this project and a project from not too long ago. Mr. Palladino requested some TIF financing on a living quarters for people that were somewhat dilapidated, as the city council describes it. He was rejected. And here we are, going to spend, I don't know how much money, it doesn't say here, city money, I guess, renovating a tourist place, I guess it is. But yeah, it's a beautiful building. I welcome it. But I think other people who were passed by, and this shouldn't be, maybe this should be also. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Brennan, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just had a question, and I'm not sure I should direct it to you. It is about the tax issue. I had a constituent who was concerned that this would create inconsistent taxation system. And she was worried that it would create a patchwork quilt across the city. Can somebody please just address how exactly this would work for your building?
Jay, you can handle it. We have Kevin Anderson from the mayor's staff here, too. He's walking down behind you.
If Kevin wants to speak about how the tax is applied, he can speak about that. I can speak specific, anything that is project-related, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. Yeah, what these EEA taxing districts do is allow that opt-in taxing district as a redevelopment tool utilized by a developer. And so within the various approvals we've had thus far utilizing this tool and the project at hand, there are a number of these established districts throughout our jurisdiction. And so what we as a city can do is, now that we've got a certain amount of these approved and in effect, is start to, you know, start mapping and identifying some of these areas and what the implications for those excess taxes are and how they're, and more specifically where they're applied, and start getting the word out by that mechanism. To large extent, this tool has been utilized for hospitality and entertainment-type districts in uses with the thought process being that a large element of that tax burden for these extra occupation taxes are then borne by, in the specific case of hospitality in this hotel use, out-of-town visitors.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thanks. I always like to clarify the, kind of clarify the record when things are stated incorrectly. But this is not a, this is not a tax increment financing project. This is an EEA. So there is no tax increment financing. Moreover, there's no city dollars being spent on your project. Isn't that correct?
No, this is not a TIF project.
Correct. And no city money is being spent on this?
No.
So I just wanted to, I like to educate people since some comments were made that you were spending our city money. I wanted to allow you the ability to kind of correct that.
I appreciate the clarification. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, you know, here's the other thing is, in this pandemic that we didn't see coming, the hotel industry was probably the most disproportionately affected industry in our nation. I mean, maybe we could argue the airlines. But it's, the hotels are a lot of individual, even small businesses, you know? And something like Hotel Deco that's been sitting, it's closed in March of 2020, correct?
Correct.
These are the places, and I even know in my own district, I think I was speaking about it last week, I have the Sheridan Hotel over in the Old Mill area that's been closed since March of 2020. And we're not sure if we're going to be able to get something in there, and it's going to sit empty. And if we start having these all over our city, we're going to have buildings such as this that are then going to affect the values of the buildings around it. So although Ms. Brennan, I've always had that issue with the enhanced employment tax. But we've always had kind of the other taxes that we've had on hotels and car rentals, and there's always been additional taxes. So I think that this is a good tool where it's not being used in conjunction with a TIF project. It's being, it's being used on its own. And without it, you may not have the financing because as we were told earlier, I think a lot of the banks and the funders have kind of shut hotels off because unfortunately, they're not producing and they're not as a secure investment. So I guess what I want to say is I appreciate White Lotus making the investment so that we don't lose yet another hotel in our city. Because as we come back from this pandemic, and we have the College World Series, as I knock, and we have people coming into town this summer, we need to continue to have good hotels where travelers want to come. And that's how, that's how we expand our tax base and our tax revenue so that it's not coming from the citizens of Omaha. So I think this is a great project. I'm really glad that you're taking the chance and that you're making the investment and that your group is doing that because I think it's going to benefit, benefit all of us. And this is just the only incentive that we really have in order to help you do that. And we need to make sure we're doing that for our small businesses in Omaha. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Melton. I appreciate that. And the collaboration of the city and the community to create programs like this are very helpful for developments. It's a tool that I think is being very aptly applied. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to add as well, Councilmember Melton, you're exactly right. We rely on tourism in this town more than people realize. And this won't be the first hotel that we see in front of us. There's a certain percentage of makeup who stays at these hotels. And we know the business class traveler is zero, and they were a large percentage of heads in beds. And when people come and they stay in our city, as we continue to hopefully keep all these hotels open, they spend money. They spend lots of money, and it helps all of us. So whatever we can do to help you, help the community, help tourism out is going to be a win-win for the City of Omaha, no doubt about it. So thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. I would just add a few things. First, it's in the downtown area, which is in District Three that I represent. And besides all these great reasons you heard for supporting this project, it helps keep Omaha's downtown vibrant and strong. But on a sentimental note, it was a place where in 1991, believe it or not, my honeymoon was, began the night of my wedding in the honeymoon suite up there on the top. So if for anything other than sentimental reasons, I can't vote against this.
Well, I can assure you, it'll be back and better than ever.
Okay. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to consider a Class K liquor license for the Broke Down Palace located at 8805 Maple Street.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Dennis Coley. I am attorney for the applicant. I'm also the father of the signatory to the application, who's out enjoying himself today. And by the way, I was married 50 years ago, and my bride is just as sweet as ever.
Good for you, Mr. Coley.
I think the application speaks for itself. I'm unsure if there's any opponents, but I'm somewhat confident there will be none. And my son and his partner now have two locations. They have the same theme for the name of their second entity. It's called Men Overboard LLC, in addition to Sunken Ship Investments. But they are taking properties that are probably, were probably somewhat depressed and done a pretty admirable job. They've got a good clientele. They've cleaned up their respective places. And I think they're making essentially a good improvement to both the Benson area and the 88th and Maple area.
Mr. Coley, can we just have your business address for the record, please?
Yes, my apologies. I'm at 2710 North Main Street of Omaha, formerly known as Elkhorn, Nebraska, also commonly known as Old Town, Nebraska, 68002.
Thank you.
68022.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero.
And our appreciation, a pardon due to the city clerk's office. They've been very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm 20 years behind you this summer, Mr. Coley.
I just wish we had, they had a hairline for us.
Amen to that.
Item 11, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Switch Food Hall located at 3618 Farnum Street, Suite C.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. The proponents with the applicant are registered by Zoom. We have Mr. Mike Kelly, 2894 South 87th Avenue for the applicant, Mr. Dwyer, 3618 Farnum. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, as you said, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here for Blackstone Food Group, which is now taking over, which was the Switch. It's just a, they're taking over an existing, what was an existing license, but a different group to manage the liquor license. And we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Fairway located at 13150 Fort Street.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? I don't see them registered by Zoom. Is there time to, for one week? Roll call. Oh, Councilmember Melton, you have your line in.
Oh, I'm tired. I was going to motion to lay it over. I'll second it.
Are you here with this item?
Is somebody here for Fairway?
Yeah, now's your time to shine. Come on down. We'll need your name, address, and I'm sure you're here happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Kobe Pritchard, Fairway Stores, 7158th Street, Boone, Iowa.
Wow. You wouldn't want to have to report back tonight.
Want to make sure I was correct there, so thanks, everyone. Just happy to answer any questions. We're getting ready to start construction on our first, or following a store in northwest Omaha. You've probably seen the walls start to go up. It's going to be a great project, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Great.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, if you, I just want to, could you pop back up here?
We'll need your name and address.
Yeah, and I didn't catch your last name. I'm sorry.
Kobe Pritchard.
Pritchard. All right. Well, Kobe, I'm the councilperson in where the store is going in. And I have to tell you, there's a lot of excitement. We're all very excited to get Fairway back open because we missed the one that was closed. It was kind of in Mr. Festerson's district. But great, great meat, meat department. So I'm looking forward to having you kind of near our house. And most of us are out there are looking forward to having you open. So what's your estimated time for opening?
Yeah, so I think right now, did have a couple hiccups in construction weather, but late April is our target open date. So getting, getting close. And this will be the relocate of the store, obviously, that we it shut down in the strip center. And it's kind of been a long time coming and a project we're pretty darn excited about, so.
Yes, I've missed, you know, I have to drive all the way over. I go to the La Vista location now. But I'm looking forward to having the one back over here in northwest Omaha, so.
And we have our contact us page, and I don't know if we've gotten so many pings asking when it's going to be open because of the popularity for the spot.
I've been asked myself, do you know when it's opening? So I'm glad I now have an answer.
Which is great to hear, too, when we see all these comments and people excited about the project, so.
No, it's great. Thank you very much. And I'll motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Brennan.
Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
We're going to, we're going to have a little technology reboot. There we go.
Item 13, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Agave Mexican Grill in Cantina Two, located at 6222 North 72nd Street.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. We have the applicant, Michelle Lopez, registered to participate by video conferencing. Ms. Lopez, welcome.
Hello.
Name and address, please, and.
I'm Michelle Lopez, and I'm
Okay, that's cool.
Number two, we are located on 622 North 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Brennan.
Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to consider a Class K liquor license for Spirits and Things located at 2762 South 129th Avenue with a waiver to City Council Liquor Rule Seven.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. The applicant, Mr. Wagner, is registered to participate by video conferencing. Mr. Wagner, we'll need your name and address, please.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Nick Wagner, representing Spirits and Things, 2762 South 129th Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
I'll wait.
Oh, that's okay. He'd said that. Yeah. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 15, to consider a liquor license addition application for Stokes Grill and Bars Class I license located at 13615 California Street to add an outdoor area approximately 39 feet by 86 feet to the west. Aids communication from the Planning Department regarding a fence for their outdoor area.
Would it be contingent upon permits? Okay. The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. We have the applicant, Mr. John Wade, registered to participate by video conferencing. And Mr. Wade, I see you made it in the nick of time. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. John Wade, 3918 South 194th Street.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the Board of Health, too.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Chevys located at 2607 North Main Street for a beer garden on June 4th, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight with music until midnight.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Is the applicant here? He's usually here. Jeremy. He's not registered, is he? Do we have time on this one? What's? Okay, we've advertised the public hearing. There's a motion to lay over. We're going to lay it over. Is that to continue the public hearing? Okay, is there anyone wishing to testify on this, either proponent or opponent? Seeing none, there's a motion. Second, to lay over one week and continue the public hearing. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda item 17 was held on February 23, 2021. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
There's been a request to move an item up from the supplemental agenda. Is that right?
Remove.
We're going to remove item 30 from consent, and we'll take that up first. So the public hearing on item 30 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. Item number 30, and I'll reserve the, most of my testimony for the subsequent item, but item number 30 is the formal resolution to accept 22, just under 22 and a quarter million dollars for emergency rental assistance. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we vote on this or call 76 up? Okay, are there any other individuals wishing to testify on item 30?
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Birch Street. Hello, councilors. Over the pandemic, one thing that has, that stood out to me was the directives that were handed out. But with Congress, the U.S. Congress, one of the things they did to respond to COVID was dole out money. It was, spent a lot of money. And I'm trying to keep track of what comes into Douglas County and to Omaha. And as far as I understand it, this is from, it's coming from the state, from a 200 million pool, and 26 of that came in to Douglas County for, it's not. Anyway, like I said, I'm trying to figure out where this, this money is coming from. Well, it does, it is, all of it's coming from the Treasury. But the, the way it is divvied up, oftentimes it falls to the, the state and local governments. But this 22 million dollars, I finally figured out what, where it's going, and that's going to be going to Match. Is that, that's correct? Okay. So anyway.
Well, it's going to be going to that nonprofit to distribute grant funds to people who are in need of rental assistance.
And utilities?
Yes.
All right, and the county worked with Match last year with their, some of their allotments for assistance, and I, I think this is a good setup, working with Match, that, which has experience.
Thank you.
Putting out the money. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to testify on item 30? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought we were going to take 76 at the same time, so I'll, I'll reserve most of my comments for that as well, too. But I, I will say that, excuse me, you know, our original expectation was for more than the 22 million, but any amount for emergency rental assistance that we can deploy to, to those in need is, is greatly beneficial. So I'm happy with the, the work with the Finance Department, the Finance Committee of the Administration to see this on our agenda, and will be more than happy to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. The need for this is so great in our community. I think it's really important we exploit these funds as quickly as possible with appropriate partner like Match. Like Councilman Harding, I want to reserve my comments, I think, for the details of how that's going to go next with our agreement with him on number 76, and I know Randy's here, so we'll hear from him as to how that program will be administered in an expedient way to really reach those in need. So I'll reserve my comments also for number 76 and move approval of number 30.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, would you just come back up on this item though? Just so we have a clear record, would you please explain the agency of the U.S. government that the Treasury Department's issuing the funds for, to the city? The amount and whether this is the one-time deal or whether this is an opportunity for more funds?
Absolutely. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. This was a direct allocation from the United States Treasury as a component of the most recent COVID-related stimulus bill passed just before the, the new year. The City of Omaha, Douglas County, and the State of Nebraska all received separate direct allocations from the United States Treasury. The City of Omaha's allocation was 22,248,295 and 10 cents. And this is the first tranche of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding associated with that direct stimulus package, and there is contemplation for additional rounds in future stimulus package within, at Washington, D.C. right now.
Thank you for that clarification. We have a motion and a second on item 30, and it's anticipated that will pass, and if so, we'll then call up item 76.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 30 is approved, seven to zero. Item 76, the resolution to approve the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Agreement with Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless.
The public hearing on item 76 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. Very happy to be here to present the contract for the distribution of, as mentioned, over 22 million dollars of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program dollars, with particular use of funds being for rent, utility, and home energy cost assistance for rental households in the City of Omaha. First priority for use of funds are rent, utility, and energy, energy costs in arrears, with also eligible use of funds being prospective rent and utility payments, but with that first priority being of, of those payments in arrears. Eligible recipients in households are those at 80% area median income or less, which in the City of Omaha is, at large, is determined by your household size, but as an example, a household of four is about $69,600 annually to represent that 80, 80% income level, with a priority being those households at 50% of that, of area median income. Other eligible households are those that can document loss of income or job loss in a period of time up to 90 days prior to application for funds. So the anticipation of those losing work due to COVID-related issues being, also being eligible for those, these funds. In this scenario, for use of these funds, payments are made directly to landlords. Landlords may also apply on behalf of their tenants who may be in arrears for back, back rental payments. It is very much worth documenting that this funding is for rental and not for mortgage assistance. This agreement is with the Metro Area Continuum of Care for Homelessness, or MATCH, and will be made available by a number of mechanisms. As a requirement of this contract, MATCH will be undertaking a multimedia and multilingual promotional campaign to help get the word about, word out about accessing these funds for these eligible households and those in needs of, of these funding opportunities. But funds largely will be able to be accessed via a website, matchconnect.org, M-A-C-C-H connect.org, through various dial-in numbers, as well as the potential for walk-in sites across the community with, with partnering agencies. MATCH is an umbrella organization consisting of service providers relating to homelessness and, and housing services across our community. That being said, we ask your support and as well as ask your assistance in helping the word about, out about this very important opportunity for assistance in our community. As mentioned, Randy McCoy with MATCH is here, and I think can answer any questions, and I'll stick around as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are you a proponent, Luis?
Yes, I'm a proponent.
All right, name and address.
Mr. President. Luis Jimenez, 3306 Birch Street. I look forward to the discussion that I imagine you're going to have after this public hearing. I think possibly Counselor Festerson's going to comment. But one thing that I've noticed when these new allotments of money happen, new partnerships are forming, and experiences are being gained. New, new skills, especially like with networking and get, getting applications and, and figuring out what, how to deal with this money. And that's good, but I hope that, moving forward in the future, that there, that these types of skills aren't something that we have to rely on often. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to testify on item 76? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thought Mr. Anderson did a nice job of summarizing the program and how it's been designed, and I think it's appropriate who they're targeting and how they're targeting those in greatest need, and the timeline for getting that done, as well as the application process and eligibility. I'll thank him for working on this, because I know this was a situation where we applied literally the evening of the deadline for these funds, and were notified within two weeks that we had received this allocation, which is a very unusual timeframe for federal funds, but, but badly needed, so it was, it was really important that we mobilized to secure this funding. Mr. McCoy, I might have you come down. I want to have you just address the council a little bit, and I might have a couple of questions for you about how the partnership will get established, and how quickly we can get these things going, and how this large amount of money can be monitored appropriately. But first, I want you to describe to us what you're seeing in your work, and thanking you for your work, for all you do to help those in need in our community, but describe for us a little bit what you're seeing in terms of the need.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Randy McCoy, Executive Director for MATCH, 6001 Dodge Street, Suite 117D. What have we seen over the last year? The COVID pandemic has impacted the entire community in one way or another, but unfortunately, there are certain segments of the community that have been impacted in more dramatic ways, not only by higher rates of COVID infection, but also dislocation from employment or loss of income, having to stay home to take care of children who couldn't or couldn't go to school, or, or take care of family members who have been impacted by the COVID pandemic. And sometimes that impact also leads to arrears in terms of rent, utilities, and, and the potential of loss of housing through the eviction process or, or other mechanisms. It has been pretty amazing to watch the community come together over the last year and, and respond to that, both at, at the city government and county government levels, but also through private philanthropy and the agencies that have participated in the projects over the last year to help people stay housed. We see the 2021 will be a continuation of that until things can really get back to normal, or whatever the new normal is post-pandemic again, that people are getting back to work, being able to pay rent and, and utilities on time, and that crisis is sort of over.
And I assume you're seeing that need throughout the community, not in any, just one location, right?
We are, we are not. There are definitely zip codes within the, the Omaha metro area that are higher impacted, but I don't think at this point there are any zip codes that we haven't received assistance requests for and been able to, to serve individuals.
And there have been some eviction moratoriums, but we're to the point now where those haven't been sufficient and aren't long enough to really address the need like this can help with, right?
Yes, Councilman. The, the moratoriums have, have been a good stopgap in, in some cases, but even the federal moratorium through the CDC had certain requirements that individuals had to complete an application process or complete a form submitted to their landlords. If they had a, an eviction hearing, they needed to show up and be able to address those issues, and, and so even a moratorium wasn't a complete resolution to the crisis, and, and this is really a, a great step in that, in, in that way. This allows us to pay arrears. It allows us, as, as was mentioned, to, to pay prospective rent forwards so that people don't have to keep coming back month after month. And, and because of the time limit that Congress allowed in these funds to pay up to 12 months of assistance, it really allows for people to get through the pandemic and hopefully back on their feet again.
And for those that may not be familiar with MATCH, can you just describe your organization a little bit to those that are watching and the many partners that you work with?
Yes, sir. MATCH is a nonprofit entity originally formed in 1996 as Ouch, and, and then formally created as a nonprofit in 2006. We serve several functions in the community. We are a collective impact organization that tries to bring together all of the partner agencies who work in housing and homeless services to, to build a better homeless response system for the community. Our catchment includes Douglas and Sarpy Counties in Nebraska and Potawatomi County in Iowa. We also serve as the HUD-designated collaborative applicant and lead entity for their homeless assistance application processes. And beginning in late March, early April of 2020, we began the Housing Problem Solving Project, which, as, as was mentioned earlier, began applying for and collecting funds that we distribute through about 20 or 25 nonprofits to individuals and households who are in need in the community. Last year, we dispersed about $10, $10 million in, in assistance programs to just under 6,000 households, including almost 15,000 individuals.
That's really impressive work, and I think especially now. We appreciate your hustle with this program to, to be prepared to accept $22 million and get it to those in need in the community. It's a really big task, but we know you're up to it as a partner. Can you talk to us a little bit more about what Mr. Anderson walked through, sort of your timeline for, and your intentions with the application process and how you expect to get the word out? I'm pleased to hear it's going to be a multilingual campaign, and not just web-based, but also walk-in, all the things you'll go through to make sure this gets to the right people?
Yes, sir. From the very beginning, when we launched Housing Problem Solving last year, we knew that it was going to be important to be able to not only provide the funds in, in an appropriate manner, but also make sure that it was easily accessible for everyone across the community who would need to tap into those kind of assistance programs. And so, as was mentioned, we created a, a website that people could go on. We use it as a repository of information about all kinds of assistance programs, not just this one, but, but all the programs that we can, means that we're constantly updating it. Individuals can click on a button there that says Contact MATCH and fill out some information that staff members at our organization would work through their application and help them apply for it. It also contains links to things like partner organizations, and then you can see a list of agencies that we work with. Click on their name and under that tab, and it'll take you to their website. So we wanted to make sure that it was available not only via the web so that people could apply, but also phone numbers so people could call in and start their application, but more importantly, that we have partner agencies placed strategically throughout the community where people can walk into. What we strive to do is hopefully build that relationship that somebody may already have with a partner agency, or can be referred to by individuals or, or segments of the community that they trust. I think the, the advertising campaign will be an important piece of that, especially multilingual. We have learned over the last year that English can be a barrier in, in some cases. It is not everyone's first language, and sometimes the, the intricacies of completing the questionnaires or assessments requires that translation service, and, and so hopefully this will make it significantly easier for individuals all across the community to be able to tap into.
And I believe how their agreement reads and how the release of funds will occur is that when this is approved today, they'll release $7.5 million to have all those startup costs and, and program issues start to flow, and then once that money starts to be expended, the City will release, I think it's $5 million in additional aid throughout the rest of the eligible funds that are available to address this issue. And I want people to know that the agreement also says that not more than 10% of these funds can be used for administrative costs or any kind of administrative issue. These are funds going. These are funds going directly to folks in need, right?
Yes, sir. That, that's a statutory requirement that was appropriate, approved by Congress in the act itself. The, the intent of, of that ten percent of funds would be not necessarily the administration of it, not, not two point two million dollars for administration, but the advertising campaign, cost certification auditing to make sure that the funds are expended correctly, partnering with other agencies throughout the community and being able to expand their capacity to, you know, perhaps hire additional staff to process applications, their internal capacities to make sure the funds are expended correctly and things like that.
And can you talk, talk about the monitoring a little bit more? It talks about having an independent auditor just to make sure there's an accurate reporting structure back to the city and that funds are being used appropriately?
Yes, sir. We would contract with an independent auditor. We're in negotiations with them now to get the contract in place. What they would do is on a monthly basis, and then of course with quarterly and, and final reporting, do a test. So they would set up a specific subset of the approvals from that month. They would test to make sure all the documentation was collected, all expenses were eligible, prepared correctly, and then submit a report to the, the city.
And should these funds be expended, or I think it's sixty-five percent of these funds be expended by September, we are, we are eligible for additional federal funding, which I think we should anticipate and I suspect we will need and should be prepared to apply for. So that's, I think my last question, then I'll yield the floor here. In terms of timeline, how quickly can funds be available, and then do you anticipate being in that position in September where it will be at least sixty-five percent administered?
That is our goal, and we will, you know, break neck to get a minimum of sixty-five percent administered by the end of September. I think it's a reasonable goal. I mean, even if you break it out, it's about two million dollars a month, which if you look at last year's expenditures for, for not only our organization, but also other programs like the Douglas County General Assistance Fund, I think that's pretty consistent with, with what was, was going out the door in those things, in, in those time periods. In terms of getting the program up and, and going, it is our sincere hope in working towards an end of March, very first of April launch date for that. There are still some, some pieces to put in place, like the, the audit monitoring contract and the, and the informational campaign, but also making sure that the assessment and data collection is designed around the requirements of the act and, and new frequently asked questions or FAQ guidance that was received last week from Treasury on the, on the program.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate your partnership, appreciate you being here. I'm going to stop talking so we don't delay that any longer, and I'll motion to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Randy, if you wouldn't mind, you can stand there, but I think you might just end up nodding yes to a lot of the things I'm going to say, but you're, you're more than welcome to, to stand there in case I do have a question. First of all, I, I think it should be comforting to the, the taxpayers as well as the potential beneficiaries to know that MATCH is, is the partner that Omaha is going to use for this process. I mean, just listening to you, I think, again, gives that great comfort level for both the taxpayers to know that this is going to be done properly and for those that are going to benefit from, from these funds, knowing that your organization is, is the one conducting it.
Thank you.
I, I think as, as was said, this, this money needed, needs to be deployed quickly. The, the process for application and approval has been pointed out, it happened rather quickly. And, and this is why it's so, I think, so important to partner with someone like MATCH to, to deploy this money is because of the relationship, past relationship and, and work that the city has done in partnership with MATCH. And, and I'll read a little bit of that just to, to make sure I don't miss anything, but, you know, in, in past partnerships with the city, we, you know, we provided short-term rental assistance for those impacted by COVID-19, provided case management to those in need to find other resources for housing stability, and the involvement in the pilot program to prevent evictions. I think that past record, if you will, of MATCH is the reason why the city of Omaha is relying on you and your, your employees and, and your volunteers and, and your staff to deploy this money as quickly as possible for, again, something that's, that's needed so vitally for, for those in need in our community. There's no reason to recreate the wheel. Sometimes in government, we get accused of, of doing that, and we get accused of taking little fiefdoms and making sure that no one touches our money or touches our program. But I think this collaborative effort on behalf of the city and with, with you as, as the leader of this, getting these funds distributed to those in need, I have every confidence in the world that you'll be successful. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I just have a, a couple of questions. First, I, I think it's, it's, it's great that landlords can, can actually apply on, on behalf of maybe multiple people, especially if you have multilingual and there may be some, some problems, that it's good that a landlord can help do that. And I also appreciate the fact that we have had a moratorium, and, you know, not all landlords are, are wealthy, wealthy people with, with a whole lot of developments that can just afford to not collect rent for a year when they actually have mortgages on those properties that, that need to be paid. So I think that this is, this is a really good opportunity to be able to fix some of those things. And also, even though we've had a moratorium, there have been evictions going on. It's not like the eviction court just stopped. And so that's what leads me to my actual other question. Although most landlords are good, we've run into a number of landlords that maybe take advantage of people that are their renters. So in the event that, or even in the future, is there going to be a list or a way for even an attorney, especially like a volunteer attorney, if they're working with a tenant that may be getting evicted, to make sure that any of the funds that the landlords received was actually applied to those people's rent? Because, I mean, what I see moving forward, and I know, I know Councilman Gray's shaking his head yes, can, can you not see the future problems that we may have a year from now? Where somebody may move out, they were like, I, no, I was told that there were, there were amounts contributed under this act and I don't owe it, and now the landlords are going to try and collect it. Where would, let's say hypothetically, Councilwoman Jerem was going to do some, some volunteer work and is representing them in, in the courtroom, where could he go to find out if that landlord received money that, to pay for the rent and then that was not applied? Is there going to be a list at least available? I don't know if it would be available to the public, but maybe it could be available to tenants or somebody requesting it?
Yes, Councilwoman, I, I believe that that is true, and I think it would really be in the audit log. And so I know just, just in our program, so if we were to issue payment to, and let's just say Councilman Harding, for a tenant, there's a letter that goes along with the check that says, this is for this person, for this amount, for, you know, the months covered and things like that. It also gets entered into the database through, through our accounting folks.
Okay.
So that they know, and then of course a W nine or, or tax documents are issued at the end of the year for, you know, Councilman Harding and whatever.
Right.
Properties that, that he would have received. And so if it turned out in the future that Councilman Jerem was representing someone in court and there was a question about that, then we certainly could, you know, pull copies of the letter and the check payment or the check that was sent to the landlord property owner and that, that audit record, I guess, of, of this payment was made for this individual for these months of service.
And since it says, since it says, um, public funds, would that be readily available upon request, or would it have to be by subpoena? I'm just trying to figure out how easily that, the information could be received.
That, I don't know that I have the exact answer for, and, and I would, I would probably defer to the, to the city attorneys about what is, you know, open records in terms of those kinds of things.
Right.
Especially around individual, individual privacy or, or declarations or things like that. But I think certainly if an attorney was, was coming and saying, we need this record or something like that.
For this tenant, because you'd only be asking for potentially your own, your own client, but it may be something to keep in mind. What I always like to do is try and identify problems that we may run into and maybe get on topic now as opposed to six months from now or a year from now, then we'd be looking back and going, oh, well, maybe we should have done something different to anticipate this. And, and again, it's not for everybody, but there may be a, you know, a certain percentage where maybe the tenants wouldn't necessarily know or necessarily get the credit for the payments that were made, and that would be unfortunate. We don't want to have that.
Yeah.
We don't want to have that happen. So I appreciate that.
And I, I think, I think I could see the, the possibility of that under the situations where the landlord was applying directly for the client, and so saying, this person owes me money and I'm applying for them. But I believe there's, there's a piece in the act that talks about the, the tenant themselves have to sign a form. Basically, it says, I'm allowing the landlord to apply directly towards me. And so hopefully, hopefully that would short a little bit of that, but.
You, you would hope, but you also, they may be signing something that their landlord asked him to sign, that they don't know.
Exactly.
Necessarily what they're, what they sent. I just wanted to make sure that there's some kind of tracking so that, that could be the case that we could prove that in the future. So I, I appreciate it, and thank you for, thank you for all of your work, and I know this is something that was kind of thrown at you. You're going to, and you're going to have to move quickly to get it all done, but I do think that you are the best organization to do that. We wouldn't want the city of Omaha to have to hire more people, expend more taxpayer dollars in order to set this, this up when we have a program like yours, a nonprofit like yours already set up to be able to do that, and then utilize the other great nonprofits that we have in the city that have been doing this all along. So thank you for that. I think that was my, that was my only, that was my only question, so I, I appreciate it. I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding. Oh, nope, Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Randy, I appreciate the explanation. And, and first off, this is probably the easiest vote we're going to take, right? We know the need in the community for rental assistance and for utilities, and I think you went over the rental part good, but I want to ask you about the utilities, or maybe Kevin would have an answer to this as well. So originally, you had talked about getting us caught up from their arrears, and maybe that takes us back to March, but we know with some of the utility companies, whether OPBD or MUD, they fall out of a moratorium in March to where maybe that starts in the holidays. So I want to make sure, because this is especially important, that we just don't get people caught up, but then we don't take care of what they're behind, because if you pay back till March, there could be the fact that the moratorium's caught up, and they're still four or five months behind. And the goal of this is to, to help people out. So if either one of you could answer on how, and how you worked with the utilities to get the folks who are in need back to zero?
Thank you. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. It's a very important question and one that we did kind of contact the utility to see what the, is, the prevalence of that issue is. And, and fortunately, it's not significant of those that may have been arrears, looking back to the original look-back period contemplated under this program of March two thousand and twenty, but it is out there. And to the, to the sense that we can, we'll work actively and directly with those utilities to ensure that if they then take advantage of this funding source to get those in arrears even back to March of two thousand and twenty caught up, and yet maybe they were in arrears even prior to that, that there is ample opportunity in that, you know, we're not shutting off heat or, or power to an individual, even though they've, you know, they've, they've kind of caught up to the sense that they were, they were, may have been behind since March two thousand and twenty, but in, in the sense that they were in arrears prior to that, that they are working a graceful period. And just last week, they, or, yeah, last week, they announced their own kind of financial assistance program associated with, with COVID-related. So it, it's still a little bit fresh off the press, but we do need to work actively with our utility providers to see how those two, and these two programs will mesh up and that, you know, we're giving every opportunity available to those tenants or renters in arrears to that extent, the ability to get caught up and, and not face any, any of the potential consequences that could come with that.
Okay. I, I mean, I appreciate that because it's very important, right? Somebody will think, well, there's this assistance here, and now we're all caught up and we're good, and then all of a sudden they open that bill from gas, water, electricity, whatever it is, and they're not caught up, and then they find themselves back in this situation again. So I appreciate the work you've put into this, and like I said, I, I will look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Just real quickly, and I, I was going to, I forgot to mention this at the end of my comments, and, and I hope it's, it's a moment of levity, but it's, it's interesting just as we talk about MATCH, which there are a number of people have always kind of, not always, but many people have said has been a kind of a hard acronym for such a great organization, but if you have progressed from OCH to MATCH, you've moved in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah. We're not the dating website and we're not mock, so.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy, I, I just have a question. It comes from anecdotal observation. It comes from constituents contacting me, but I think we could all agree if you're in the really horrible position of being one of the individuals who desperately needs this assistance, the, the prospect of losing your, the roof over your head and being put out on the street is, is daunting to say the least. And so what may seem like a program that's operating at significant pace in terms of our, the way government works, and the way maybe your organization or your partnership nonprofit organizations work, there, there was still the sense in the prior program that things didn't move quickly enough for a significant number of people, and therefore there's already this sense of, it's great that this is going to be there, but will it be there when I need it to be there? So what say you to the people who are in that situation to address that concern?
Well, and I would agree with you completely, Councilman. Being in that position of, of thinking, I, I don't know where I'm going to stay in, in the next few days or tonight even, is probably one of the most traumatic ones a lot of people will face. One of the, one of the things that we have tried to do since the beginning is build our, our program around almost a one-on-one working relationship as opposed to complete all these forms, then we'll take a look at it, and then we'll just, you know, let you know kind of what happened, and really trying to have an ongoing dialogue with the individuals that, that are, are needing assistance. It does not necessarily mean that everything goes as fast as we want it to because of documentation requirements, both on the tenant's end, but also sometimes on the property manager's end. But, but hopefully that, that relationship that we are, those conversations that we're having keeps people informed and in the loop and, and kind of that understanding that this is where we are in the process, these are the next steps that we need to take, and we're resolving it as quickly as possible. I don't, you know, for, for this program, we would continue to increase the number of staff available through the partner agencies and, and potentially through, through our contractors as well to help speed those, those processes up. And as we are developing the assessment requirements and things like that, just make it as easy as possible for, for people to do it. Just as an example, one of the things that we were able to do last year was take a picture of, of your lease, your paycheck, your whatever, and, you know, you can text that to us. You don't have to go and find the capability to scan it and, and all those other pieces. As long as we can legibly see the picture and that conforms to the requirements, then, then that's an easier way to get those documents and hopefully speed that process up. But I, I definitely think it's one that, you know, continued vigilance in, in making the process easier, faster, and more responsive to individuals. The other thing I would say, I guess, is even as we're waiting for these funds to come online, it's not like there are no funds available in the community. There's limited funds and nowhere near the volume that the Treasury funds will provide, but there are assistance programs that we're operating right now, again, not nearly to this level, and it will not cover the need in the community, but still trying to process as many applications as quickly as possible for people who are in need.
Does MATCH or your partner nonprofits keep data on the average time from application to award and distribution of the funds?
I, I can't speak for all the, the partners, but I would say internally, we don't, we don't have a, a, a set like that, no.
You see, to me, along the lines with the questions that Councilmember Melton was asking, there needs to be, in my view, an accountability component that gives confidence to the taxpayers. that gives confidence to the taxpayers who are funding the programs through the Department of Treasury that the money is getting where it needs to go as soon as we can possibly and safeguardedly make sure it gets to where it needs to go properly in the most efficient expedited basis possible. And so what better way to measure that is this auditing process you have, which I would hope would have a time clock, so to speak, so you could report, hey, you know, we're averaging now eighteen days from the date of the application to award. But now in July, we're averaging ten days. Or six, or hey, you know what, we're averaging ninety days. That's the kind of information I'd be really interested to see, and I think a lot of other people would be. But I think it would help the people who are counting on this to stay off the street to kind of know where they are in the pipeline or to know some kind of expectancy as to how much time maybe is left to get. I mean, just online with the DMV this morning, they were telling me what to expect on my driver's license renewal. And double whammy, I had to register a car again today, so. But I'm thinking to myself, well, if we're later on today gonna be talking about something that's really significant in terms of helping people stay in their homes, wouldn't it be great if we could tell them, hey, here's what to expect and when to expect it? And so I would encourage that component to the extent that it's out there. Mr. Anderson, who was the city legal side of this in terms of the contract?
Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. Michelle Peters in the law office helped us put together this contract.
And I didn't see the particular term, maybe you can point it out or someone from City Legal can, is that, who owns the data? Who owns the data? That's in the contracts I review. Everybody wants to know, who owns the data?
Yep.
And if it's public-funded, what of this data can be readily accessible? Because it should be, and I think, in an open democracy, something where people can, including the media and press, they can find these things out, right? You may want to protect the privacy information. That's a good thing, but metadata, for sure,
Yep.
should be available. Do you agree with that?
I would. I would yield to the city attorney for that type of question, even alluding to Councilmember Melton's point on discoverability for additional forms of assistance down the road. You know, certainly they'll be reporting back to the city on a quarterly basis as required and as well as the subjective drawdowns as it relates to the tranches of funds. I would certainly think those would be a public record, but I'll yield to the city attorney for that type of question.
I think I know the answer to it, but if Mr. Cousy wants to weigh in, you're certainly welcome to.
Matt Cousy, City Law Department. The money is given to the city, so in a sense, it is the city's money. MATCH is simply the entity that's disseminating the money that was given to us by the federal government. Any types of the audits, the other reporting requirements that are not only required by the federal agreement are also contemplated within our agreement with MATCH. So it's our money, it's our data for us to have and review if situations like the one Councilmember Jerem has mentioned or in types of situations that Councilmember Melton contemplated as potential issues.
Thank you. And what say you about the expectation of and keeping data in terms of how long it took for people from application to award? Do you think that's something, Mr. Cousy, within the parameters of this contract is something that's contemplated? Or is that something that would need to be amended if we were not receiving that?
Matt Cousy, City Law Department. I don't think that that was something. From my glancing at the agreement, it does not appear that that was something that was necessarily contemplated in this agreement. As to your specific point about the type of information that you're specifically seeking, I think generally that could be required. There are some general languages about the reporting requirements and things of that nature, but in terms of it being specifically mentioned in there, it is not contained within the agreement.
Thank you. And I think Mr. McCoy said he was open to that and willing to have that data encouraged among your partner organizations, suspecting there were some that have less capacity to do with than others, as I heard what you were saying. But I still think that this is something we should be doing because if we do it well, it'll help us, help people understand when help is on the way, right?
Yes, I would agree with that. I will not pretend to be an IT expert and so. But the database that we're gonna use for this, there may be a report that can be built that kind of says, here's a timestamp or a date stamp of like when the application was started and a second stamp about when it was completed or when it was, you know, approved, rejected, for whatever the reason was. And you could calculate along those lines or something like that, so.
So for example, if you had AAA Partner Entity, BBB, CCC, the three entities. And Councilmember Melton walks into AAA Nonprofit and submits her application March 2. Mr. Harding walks into Organization BBB and the same day, same morning, and fills out his grant with app with that organization. Council Vice President Palermo goes into CCC and, you know, Councilmember Melton's nonprofit gets her paperwork all processed in the queue. Award goes out seventeen days later. Councilmember Harding goes out roughly the same time and Council Vice President Palermo just happens to live in my district and says, hey, you know, I applied for this money forty-six days ago and I haven't heard anything here. See what I'm, the point I'm making?
Yes, sir.
So how do you handle that?
Well, I think it would be a-
How do you track that to know, hey, you know, CCC Inc., what's going on here?
I think if you could build up the reports in the system, then you could start looking at it on a agency-specific level and not necessarily, like as an aggregate level, but not necessarily the individual level, because the individual level, there could be a lot of different variances in there. And so just as in your example, Councilperson Melton came in with all the information that was needed at that first one, whereas Councilman Harding may have had half of it and Councilman Palermo may have had none of it. There's also that requirement on the back end with the property manager, the landlord, who could also delay that process significantly, but it would be no fault of the applicant or the, you know, the agency. But I think you could probably look at it on like an aggregate kind of basis. And so you could say things like, if Agency A's average is ten days and B is twelve days and C is thirty-eight days, there may be capacity issues within Agency C that we could help with some technical assistance or something like that on.
Okay. Well, I hope you understand where my questions are coming from. It's just so that the people who need the help the most can get the funds the quickest, most efficiently, and that there's accountability and tracking available to monitor this.
Right.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you. This can be an incredible opportunity to help people in need in our community. And, you know, I'm pleased to support it and I'm pleased to hear that you're so open to the things that I think will make the program better and more accountable. And I know we have a motion, a second, but I see another light. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note too, and I understand the, obviously, the importance to make sure that we have good record-keeping and financial management. I do, I just wanted to note too that in Section 5.01 of the agreement, 5.02, 5.03, and really 5.04, all pertain to the the record-keeping as well as the audits required. And with the, with the language, with the flexibility of the language and how we can hone that down, I'm very comfortable. And I just talked to the acting city attorney about it. I think we're all very comfortable that that flexibility is in there, but the basic framework for that accountability and the ability to audit is also there too. So again, I'm very comfortable with the arrangement with MATCH for this program and know that we have these safeguards in place. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 76 is approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 18 through 29 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. One public hearing can be held for Items 31 through 33. Ordinance is to transfer permanent easements to MUD for property located near North 16th Street and Grant Street, North 16th Street and Churchill Street, and property located near Ohio Street between North 16th Street and North 18th Street.
The public hearing on Items 31 through 33 begin at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 34, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Grover Street, 50th to 60th Streets Public Improvements Project.
Public hearing on Item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 35, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 33 of the Omaha Municipal Code to establish procedures and rules for solid waste.
Public hearing on Item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 36, an ordinance approving the Dewey Park Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement located at 3312 and 3306 Jones Street and 618 South 33rd Street in an amount up to $1,400,000.
The public hearing on Item 36 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140. Married, 17 years. Here for the project applicant, 33 Jones LLC. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Shore, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Once again, I'd like to make reference to a project here a while back that was denied TIF funding. It was an old hotel in the downtown area. Apparently needed some work, but they were denied TIF funding. But now we tear down this building. That was an existing building. They didn't get money for it, but who's gonna tear that down eventually? Will the city pay for that? I wonder. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2021-06.
The public hearing on Item 37 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Litter Group 2021-07.
The public hearing on Item 38 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 39, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River NRD for Zerinsky Lake Water Quality Basin Number Two.
The public hearing on Item 39 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve open orders for the fire department to purchase medical supplies in the amount of $793,130.80.
The public hearing on Item 40 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the University of Nebraska in the amount of $26,994 to work directly with Project Safe Neighborhoods Task Force and law enforcement agencies as the PSN Research Partner.
The public hearing on Item 41 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 42, CDS Enterprise appeals the rejection of their bid from January 27, 2021 for the 2021 Brick Street Restoration Various Locations Project.
Item 42, do we have anyone from CDS Enterprise? Name, address, and the basis of your appeal, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Drew, Drew Law Firm, 1612 Lincoln Street, Blair, Nebraska, present on behalf of CDS Enterprises. The basis for this appeal is my client was bidding on a brick restoration project. It had the lowest bid. His bid amount was $491,788. The next highest bid was with Divine Mowing Services, which was $497,000. The reason that my client's bid was rejected is because it did not include Economic Equality Improvement Plan, or Involvement, Inclusion Plan, excuse me. The city code and the resolution requires that one of these EEIPs is required for all construction projects over $500,000. The two bids that were placed were both under $500,000. Now, the bidding contract itself had a Paragraph 13.12, which did say you must include a EEIP with your bid, refer to Exhibit B. When you open Exhibit B, the first line says you have to include it if the project's over $500,000. So if you go strictly by the city ordinance, this plan was not required. If you go by the Paragraph 13.12, it was. Then if you incorporate the exhibit, it's not. So we've got inconsistent rules and it seems unfair to not reward the contract to the lowest bidder when in fact the bid did comply with the city requirements. Therefore, we're asking that you consider one of two solutions because the Economic Equality Improvement Program is important. So we'd ask that either the project be rebid and allow our client to include this plan with clearer bidding instructions that even though it is less than $500,000, you need to submit the plan anyway, or reward it to the lowest bidder whose bid did in fact comply with the city code and at least one reading of the bidding packet. With that, I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you. Stick around. We'll have the city side. Ms. Tippi Pierce? You can have a seat in the second row there.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. I've got a couple of exhibits for you. So in the case of the Brick Street Restoration Contract, as is policy of the city department, our engineer's estimate was over $500,000. Therefore, the, per the instructions from the Human Rights and Relations Department, which was included with the contract documents, the EEIP requirement was included as a part of the bid specifications. We feel that this contract provision is very obviously included in our bid specifications. We specifically spell it out in Section 13.2. The very first sentence that the bidders must complete and include with this bid the Economic Equity and Inclusion Program document. We also-
And it's the template that's in Exhibit B.
Yeah. Yeah. So as we indicate here, it is the template. We include the template then as Exhibit B to the packets. And this is actually the original signed and sealed document as advertised. So here is the template. And as you can read in that first paragraph of the resolution portion, it says, "City departments are to include economic equity and inclusion plans in excess, for contracts in excess of $500,000." Per the resolution, we have- Per the resolution, we have interpreted this as our engineer's estimate of $500,000. And that's the way the department has proceeded with the determination of whether or not this requirement is included for all of our projects since that resolution was adopted. So this is very consistent with every bid we've let since that resolution was adopted. We further inform our bidders of this requirement in the actual bid form that they are to submit. Article 4E specifically lists this Exhibit D is to be included. We remind them of this in the attachment to the bid checklist that we include in the bid form. And then finally, provide a fly sheet reminding them. Your contract is to include this narrative template in place of this fly sheet. I honestly don't know how the department could have made it any more clear to a bidder that this is a requirement of the contract. And we do this for all contracts over, with an engineer's estimate, over $500,000. As you can see, this is a contract that we recently let -- I'm sorry. Zoom out a little bit. -- of a similar street reconstruction project that had an estimate of under $500,000. And you will note, the Paragraph 13.12 is not there, and neither are any other references to the EEI program in the contract. So we make it very starkly clear in our contract documents when this is to be required and when it is not. So from the department's perspective, in order to be consistent and clear to our bidders and in keeping with our policies, we would request that this appeal be denied.
Thank you. Mr. Drew, did you want a minute of rebuttal?
Yes, for me.
When you come back up, make sure you give us your name and address again so that the transcript knows who's talking.
Thank you again. Dave Drew, Attorney for CDS Enterprises, 1612 Lincoln Street, Blair, Nebraska. And I want to rebut two things. First, with regard to the engineer's estimate being over $500,000. It was, but that's not public information that's available to the bidders. So while that's a requirement, it's a secret requirement that we don't know when we're submitting bids. Then there were several references to, again, this exhibit that says, you've got to fill out this plan, you've got to fill out this plan. And they all point to that sentence that says, "City Departments are to include economic equality and inclusion plans in construction contracts in excess of $500,000." That's a topic sentence to this template that we're supposed to fill out. If we're under $500,000 and we don't know the engineer's estimate, from the information we have in the packet, it seems like it's required unless it's under $500,000.
Thank you. Does that conclude your rebuttal?
Yes.
Thank you. City Law, did you have a comment? Mr. Wiesen?
I was going to say, Matt, because you see the attorney, I'll defer to Mr. Wiesen.
Thank you. Ryan Wiesen, City Legal?
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. I'd only add a few points. The first, with respect to the attachment to the bid documents under the City of Omaha's Economic Equity and Inclusion Plan. I would note that this is a directive to the city and the city departments, in this case, the Public Works Department. It's not a directive to prospective bidders. It doesn't say, "Bidders are to include economic equity and inclusion plans in construction contracts in excess of $500,000." It's the city departments. So it's a directive to the city in this case. Additionally, I would add, while the focus initially for Paragraph 13.12 has been on the first sentence, I would note the final two sentences of that paragraph, which were part of the bid specifications. The first states that the complete economic equity and inclusion plan shall be attached to the bid as Exhibit D. It does not say shall be attached as Exhibit D if the bid is over $500,000. In this case, it says shall without any indication of a monetary threshold. The last sentence of that paragraph states, "If the economic equity and inclusion plan is not attached to the bid form, the city may consider the bid non-responsive." And that's what happened here. Again, it doesn't say, "If the economic equity and inclusion plan is not attached to the bid form, the city may consider the bid non-responsive if it is over $500,000." It is, could be considered non-responsive if it's not attached at all. And it would be our recommendation that the Public Works Department acted appropriately in this case, and that a decision to uphold their rejection would be appropriate.
Thank you. We've heard from the appellant, we've heard from City Public Works, we've heard from City Legal and their recommendation. We'll now hear from council members. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we have another bid here that we have to have lawyers decipher for us. And they get more confusing and they get closer to accepting them. But here's the bottom line. If I had the city clerk go out and buy me one of them old recorders that had the cassette tapes in them, which we probably couldn't find, but if I did and I had one here, I would hit play right now and it would say, "City of Omaha and Douglas County Planning," oh, I'm sorry, Douglas County Purchasing, get together and get an electronic bidding system. We are costing citizens of Omaha money. Now, not so much on this bid because first and second, or lowest and highest, we're very close, but it's not always the case. I can look back through these rejection appeals. We're only, you know, a few months in and we would have already paid for that system. We shouldn't be discussing between lawyers on a period or a form or, and I know why it's in there, but even this one's a little more difficult where it's an engineer's estimate, but it's not required over $500,000. So play. City of Omaha, Douglas County Purchasing, we need an electronic bidding system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just so you know how passionate this council is about this electronic bidding process, which would have a feature, Mr. Drew, so that your client would, it would have been error-proof because if he went to hit, or she went to click on submit, a message would pop up to say, "Cannot accept because you didn't upload your EEIP." But just last night, we were communicating with the mayor, who assures us that she has Ms. Wernley working on this with IT and this electronic bidding process should be available in the near future for use. So it's a priority to her as well. So we know that'll come to fruition. But unfortunately, I think because of the way the bid is written and the arguments I've heard, it'd be my view that we have to deny the appeal. But what's the pleasure of the council? We have a motion, a second, roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 43, BMI Janitorial Group appeals the rejection of their bid from January 27, 2021 for janitorial services for street maintenance facility.
The appeal for BMI Janitorial Group, do you represent BMI?
Hello, yes. My name is Dan Beckman, BMI Janitorial Group, 423 South 162nd Street, 68118.
Thank you. Would you please share with us the basis of your appeal?
There on the bid, there were a few items that were marked as zero and we intended them to mark as zero, as no charge. So there's confusion with the city. They didn't think that we, they thought we missed those boxes. But we intentionally put them as zero as no charge. There are smaller items and we put them at zero. So that's why we're appealing.
Thank you. I think you were here for the last one, so we'll now hear from the city. Public Works, and then we'll, Heather Tippy Pierce, then we'll hear from City Legal, and then Councilmember. Would you like a minute of rebuttal?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tippy Pierce.
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. I think Mr. Beckman kind of accurately captured the basis of our rejection. There was a discussion between our buyer and the purchasing department that oversaw this letting and our project manager that will be overseeing the contract. And it was their understanding that the bid submission by BMI, and I have a copy of that, that these were strike-throughs as a no bid. And this is an all-or-nothing bid, so in that case, the bid would have to be rejected. Hearing the clarification that this was actually supposed to be $0.00, you know, we would, had we have known that, we probably wouldn't have rejected this bid. So, you know, at this point, we are, we're of the opinion that, you know, we would be fine with that clarification if that is acceptable to the council as well.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that, but let's first hear from City Legal, Ryan Wiesen. And the appeal is zero means zero. That is my bid for those items. There's no public hearing. And please no shouting from the crowd, Mr. Jimenez. You know the rules.
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. Based upon internal discussions that we've had, it's my understanding that in evaluating the bid, there was apparently a question as to what this symbol meant. It can mean at times zero. I've seen zero written that way. It was interpreted by some individuals as a no bid. Having heard the testimony of the bidder and it being their intention that this was in fact zero, as in zero dollars, the council could make the determination that the bidder provided a unit price and an extension price of $0 for each of these items and that they completed every item of the bid specifications that was requested of them. And it may be appropriate for the council to, based upon the testimony and the evidence before it, return the bid to the department for consideration and overturn their rejection.
And that's what would happen if by way of a motion, a second, if it were to pass to grant the appeal, it just sends it back to the department, right?
Correct. The council cannot direct the Public Works Department to accept the bid or to forward the contract. It would be to overturn their rejection so that the department can consider the merits of the bid itself.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesen. What's the pleasure of the council? Motion to grant. We have a motion by Councilmember Gray, a second by Melton. No further lights, roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes. Just for the record, I think that's the second in 12 years that I've ever seen granted. It's an exceptional day. It doesn't mean you're assured any award here, but it allows Ms. Tippy Pierce and the department to reevaluate.
Non-action items, Items 44 through 74 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:43.